With that, we'll note the fact that the open meetings law is posted right there where Patrick's gonna post it. And with that, we're slightly political. Okay, I can like it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, with that being the case, we'll move on to the first item of new business. First, we need a roll call to see who's here. All right, let's do that. Roll call. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pikes?
Yes.
Mr. Woburn?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the first item of new business. Ms. Miller is not gonna be here tonight, so we'll have to forego that first item on the new business, and we'll, I guess, cater that as an item until next meeting. Okay, moving on to the next item of business, we have an application for our trader's job at the city, and a part-time person has come forward, been tentatively or had been working in that capacity, and I believe we need comments, concerns, or that hire, any of those kinds of stern ideas, something they'd like to share, if not, do we need a motion to hire her?
We have a resolution.
Resolution to hire?
One ten twenty twenty-three number one.
Yeah, so it'd be resolution one ten twenty twenty-three one would be the best.
And that's to hire and set rate according to.
Yep, hire and set the rate according to the, is it statute or is it ordinance that we have to set?
Ordinance.
An ordinance that sets that hard-time trader's salary at seventeen dollars per hour, if that works for everybody, we would need a motion to that effect.
I want to make a motion. I'll second it.
Okay, with that, Mr. Pikes?
Yes.
Mr. Woburn?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
So that resolution is clear for passing in this city. Next would be a resolution then to add that new employee, Jean-Christine, to signing for the bank, so she'll be able to conduct businesses signed as an employee of this city across. And that would be resolution one ten twenty twenty-three dash two.
I'll make a motion.
You second it?
Okay, with that, Mr. Woburn?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Pikes?
Yes.
Okay, the next item of business will be approved December thirteenth at twenty-first minutes from the meetings.
Two thirty. Two forty minutes from the thirteenth.
Two sets of meetings for the thirteenth, and then, yeah, 'cause we had two separate meetings, uh, two meetings in one, and then there are the twenty-first. I think we can approve those all on time with that.
Yes, we can.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minute.
Second, second. Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pikes?
Yes.
Mr. Woburn? Okay, thank you. Okay, petitions and other communications, comment. Uh, let's see. Anything others to consider, ladies and gentlemen? If not?
Bob, give it like a say.
Yep.
Can I touch real quick? Can I touch you guys real quick?
Sure.
I just wanted to pass out a... Now, I don't know if everybody signed this, and if they'd like to sign, they can do it afterwards. But, I think this is how I used to do it, so you're aware. But, I just did two things, you know, since this is just a copy, and we appreciate Patrick and all the work with all the, boy, thirteen inches of snow. And then she photographed Mr. Miller, just said, "We appreciate them." It was just some signatures around town and that, so, if that's okay, can I just?
That's fine.
Okay, go. So if anybody else wants to sign it, they didn't get you, you can just see the guys.
Con dusted.
Anybody else at this time?
I've lived in a small town all my life. I've heard, I've heard, I've heard of small-town politics all my life. And I heard something really disgusting from the last few weeks. Our nearest mayor told two of our guys, "Give fu-- quit or get, quit or get fired." And I heard from one person, another person my wife heard from. I don't think that's right, Mr. Mayor, what you said to them. That, that accusation on what you said is almost like putting stone and saying, "You're gonna be fired anyhow." You know, I'm getting kind of tired of small-town politics. Because two of the people up there, the reformer ones in there, they're too good to each other, and they're kind of running it off. One's a bully, one don't know how to do it. And you ask Larry about that, and he is, because he told me one time when we were doing a fundraising for the, um, the police, never watched, he even said, "Oh, by the way, here I talked to a lumber store, and that's what it is, and I, lumber store, and I made him give something," and he bragged about it. And my word is this, if that's how you run a city council, at two people, and these two, and these, um, cards up there, all these people signing it, and you're going to say they're fired one of, one of, and each of those two people, two of those people. And one of them is, my boy works at the gas station, and one police officer, Miller, he sat there till they come home, they went home. And they make their statement, "I heard rumors, you're gonna try to fire him today," and Patrick. Now, if that's true or not, and where it sounded, you go in that closed meeting, and they come out being that you're fired, someone's lying up there, someone's really dishonest right now, because Patrick's a good guy. You know what tools, Patrick told me, you have tools in this shop, and that's all his tools, and like, you guys borrow on the city, you know? That's how good a guy Patrick is. And you, you guys want to say, "Hey, let them go buy, you can go buy." Small-town politics is not saying, "Oh, it's small-town politics." Let's stand up for our truth. One way to catch a weasel, put, the weasel, put lights on, light on, light, light the truth on, and say, "These are weasels up there, trying to go across some of that," and try to do that, and try to guess when he's fired. That's not right. And you go to church every time right over there, and you ask forgiveness on being all that stuff like that, what are you gonna say to your priest, "Forgive me that I lied to someone, got someone fired?" You can sit your head down over there, Larry and Bob, they ain't gonna work very good.
All right.
Okay, I am done here.
Where did, I, I just, where did you hear that from?
I heard from Patrick.
And Officer Miller.
And Officer Miller, all their own mouths.
That they were approached by the mayor and said, basically, "Quit or get fired." That's not cool.
No, that's not cool. See, that's what the weasels are, you have to fight some.
Well, we're not gonna sit here and tell anybody names. We're not gonna allow that.
But still, that's, that's not right, that's not right.
What, but you, you, you mentioned small-town politics, small-town gossip.
No, it ain't gossip, I heard from Patrick myself, she told me. Don't say it's politics.
Thank you for your input. Anyone else that has comments at this time?
I have some same concerns.
Anyone else? I'm here to listen.
I've heard the same stuff, I'm, they're raised off too. And you know, there's a lot going on, these guys need their jobs, and if it wasn't for them, our dog would've been dead. And I'm sorry, there's a lot of bullshit going on in this fucking town. It could've been avoided by everybody that would've just got us off.
Okay, thank you very much for all your input, appreciate it, they definitely will be taken into consideration. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the claimants.
I just have one question on the claim, is this?
Yeah.
Is this mercury electric? What was that, you know, that one? That is for the light pole on the well of it. The REA puts it, there was a request put in, the board, the work months before, but it's now when the work has been completed and the light is on up by Sister James, up of Llewellyn Forest.
It just wasn't working. It just wasn't working.
It's brand new. It was, it was that intersection that was dark, and, and the REA put the pole in this summer, and they finished it and hooked it up, but REA can no longer do the secondary work.
Maintain or the secondary work?
Oh, the secondary.
Oh, yeah, I get you, okay.
So that's the completion of that.
Perfect, thank you, thank you. Any other issues?
I don't have any other issues, I'll through, I'll through the bill.
Motion?
Motion, Pikes?
I'll second it.
With that, I believe it's Mr. Pikes?
Yes.
Mr. Woburn? Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the next item would be, uh, moving on to reports from committees, economic development. I'm still in the process of finalizing the list of people that, for that committee, and giving some names and mostly contact information, so we can get that developed. Planning and zoning, I believe, has a tentative meeting scheduled for, or has just had, recently got a meeting, I don't know if anybody's here for planning or zoning or not, but I saw on the calendar there will be a planning and zoning meeting. I think it's next week, I'm pretty sure there's planning and zoning meeting, and I believe at that meeting they were going to, uh, establish leadership in that, among that group. Cemetery Board, I don't know if we have any authority here from the cemetery to do that, or the tree board. May those... If not, we'll move on to the next item of news administration, would be our first, our inaugural report from our new city clerk.
Down the clerk.
All right, um, I wanted to bring you copies of last month's bank statements. You don't usually get to see them, these are all the statements. Uh, we have, um, all the accounts are in Farmers Emergence. There's an account for the general fund, there's an account for the, the grant account, and you can see how much money is in it. There is shop with the cop, and there is a swimming pool construction maintenance, that was there. And that is, uh, every month I give these, they are public knowledge, they're actually in our minutes book, if anybody ever wants to come in and find out how the city's doing financially, they are put in with the minutes from each, uh, meeting from each month. So they're all there for you. The, uh, the next paper that you have is actually, this is how it looks to me on the computer, the long sheet of this exact same information. It shows you how I deposit the checks and how I take payments out. And it gives me a running total every month, I can do years, I can do months, I can do days, and find out what's been put in, and how much we have at that time. So it just kind of gives you, that's my portion of the bank statement before the bank gets it. What I did want to mention too on the bank statements, if you notice, at the back of it are all the checks. They take pictures of all the checks that we write, and they take, and even further, you'll see how I deposit the money. The deposit slips are there with, um, each person's name who sends us a payment is deposited. And I only have, the reason there's seventeen on each one is because that's how long my deposit slips are, so I do them seventeen at a time. And that gives me a perfect place to go and say, "Well, wait a minute, if somebody didn't get credited, I can go back and look," or they say, "Uh, I sent in a payment, this is where I would go to check to find out if that check had come to me, and if it had been deposited, I have a place to find it." Gives me a great running total for that. The other piece of paper that you have with the numbers on it is water usage list. Now, the interesting thing about this is that when I do the billing every month, this does a total at the bottom of my, of, when I'm done, of how many people I send billing to. It tells me how many seniors are using water, how many residential, how many commercial, it gives me a total. Then it also tells me how much sewer service, water usage, and water averages, and landfill count on it. What is mystifying to me is that I have no way to copy this, or it does not stay month to month. And I have called clerk books, and, and they're looking into it, but they can't understand why either. A computer never loses anything, so when it replaces it, it has to be there somewhere, it's not just deleting it and, or overriding it. But this gives you an idea of what I deal with when I deal with billing. And that's for, this is for the last billing section, which I'll actually be doing, now they read meters today, so the next few days I'll be busy with doing this again. At the end of the time, this will be updated with how much water was used in this paid period, and gives me a total of who is there. And you'll notice that the customers kind of fluctuate from once in a while, because we have people who leave for the winter, so they're not active customers anymore, and then as they come back, we'll get more customers too. So, and then we have customers that use water but don't use sewer. We have customers that use water and sewer but don't have garbage pickup, so that's why the numbers are different with that too, everybody doesn't know everything.
What's the landfill count, what is that?
That's how many, that's garbage pickup.
Oh.
That's a garbage pickup, they call it landfill count on this thing. So I actually took a picture of this with my phone, and then made my own Excel thing on it, so that they could give it to you.
This is, this is November, this is up here in the corner?
This is from the billing from November tenth, uh, uh, December tenth, when we did December tenth billing, uh, December fifteenth when the bills went up, that's from after that. That, the last billing that you just paid for, this was the count, for the last checks you brought in. So it gives you an idea, and we're gonna find out why, that should, I'd like to have that downloaded and put in the files every month, that I'd like to keep a total of that, so we can see the fluctuations and the differences in it.
Is this month, is this gallons, two point one million?
Yes.
Water, water usage.
Yeah, gallon of you.
And do we know how much water we're buying?
We do, um, it's on the bills every month when I'm showing.
Do we have a breakdown on that, or a sheet like this, that shows how much water we're buying compared to how much water we're using?
I can do that, I didn't do that, but, yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
If I can find a way to put this, I'll make it easier, I make it my life a lot easier. Um, on, um, Thursday, um, the mayor asked me if I would, um, check out, and this is all important, I want you people to help us with this. He asked me to check out a web, um, page that was on, and was actually a live feed that I took on, and it's about broadband. And I, I tuned into it, and what's interesting about it is that Nebraska has got a great deal of money to spend on helping small communities that don't have service or limited service, and they fund it and their services upgraded. What has happened is that they already believe that just about everybody in Nebraska has already got the service they need. And unfortunately, like, uh, some people here in town have got fifty megabytes, but the same people outside of town are using the very same service, paying for it, and only getting fifteen by the time it gets to where they are. That's the kind of thing that we need upgraded, everybody should be getting the same amount. They think that twenty-five megabytes is enough. It isn't enough, as I said, because it weakens the further you go away. So their solution to this, because the, the state's just about to make, they made a map, and they're showing, uh, areas in the state that are fine. So if you, if you have these, and if you don't have these, I can make more copies and give it to them. This is what they want you to do. The commission wants you to go online to your, uh, and find the map. If your map shows that your community is all up to date and good, don't believe it. They want you to go down, and it's very simple, it only takes a couple of minutes to go in, and you submit a complaint about the fact that you don't have this high, um, uh, internet service, and you want it. They need to know that we're not happy with what they're telling us, that we want better service, and that there are many people in the area don't have it at all because it's not available. So it's very simple, pick one of these up for me, if you, if there's not enough here, I can make more copies before we leave, pass them out, put them up at church, put them up wherever you go, and have everybody, the more people complain, the better chance we have of getting some of this, and it's billions of dollars that is being sent aside for this, and if we don't get some of it, then we're going to lose out in upgrading our internet and our broadband service. So that was what happened at the meeting, and I got a little excited about it, because I could use a little more upgrade service internet too. So please, please help us out and do that.
And we've got the paper, it's all ready.
Yeah, we'll put it in so that he knows and he can get it. They are actually going to do a lot of, uh, getting the word out too, but there is a time limit on it, and, um, they actually want the appeals by the thirteenth. They shut it down very quickly, I, I think the state's very afraid that they're gonna get overloaded with people submitting the challenges. It's called a challenge, it's all you're doing is challenge, it's not gonna hurt your service, it's not gonna hurt anything, and just let them know that your area is, does not have enough broadband, so please, help us out with that. I also, um, the, the new treasurer couldn't be here tonight, so she asked me to mention a couple of things. Uh, first off, I want you to know that we do have a lot of outstanding accounts, uh, for our water, our sewers and stuff. One of the reasons we have that is because we were not allowed to do any collecting during the COVID time. You could not turn a person off, you could tell them that they owed money, but you could not make them pay up, and you had no recourse of shutting them down or shutting them off in order to get that money. That is over, we can start doing that again, so we will be doing some collecting. Uh, the other problem we have is, uh, because of the computer problem we had, and I'm sure a lot of you've heard about the computer problem we had, honestly, the biggest glitch I've ever seen in my life in a computer, it was just unbelievable. With that, what it has left me is that some people, and some of you who know that your accounts are paid up, get billed saying that they're not paid up. So I can't really start doneing people till I make sure that each account is straight and even, because I'm not going to done you for money that you don't owe me. So I have to, every account has to be fixed before I can do that. But I just want you to know that we are working on that, and we are gonna get letters out, and hopefully soon, we'll be straight with our accounts. Um, also, um, um, Chantel asked that why we don't pay any of our utilities automatically. Our utilities could be paid directly, they can deduct it from our accounts, like our water, our garbage, a lot of the bigger accounts. She, I said, "Well, what happens if there's a mistake?" She says, "Well, if there's a mistake, because we'll still be checking it, we're not just going to let them take the money and forget it, we will get the paperwork, we will compare, make sure that they're correct." If there is a mistake, and it's their mistake, they will refund the money to us, they will make it straight. If it's our mistake, then we can make it straight to them too. But she said it would be much easier, very, uh, better accounting, lot less checks to be written out, and just go very smoothly. So she'd like you to think about that and, and check into that. Also, she said that she is, uh, she's been just wonderful, she's only been here three days. And she, we needed her because I don't know the statutes of Nebraska, the federal and the state rules that we need for all the things that a public entity like this needs, and believe me, there are plenty. So she is, um, very aware of these and, and very versed in these, and she's already done a great job. We have caught up on our sales tax that was behind, on our unemployment, uh, she's right now working on W-two's because it is that time of year. And she asked that you would think about hiring a CPA to do our W-two's and get our taxes straight this year. She actually has the years before to compare with, but doesn't believe that they are correct. And if they're not, we're gonna be hearing about it, because it'll come that time, and she doesn't want to make the same mistakes. So she said just a CPA who would come in, straighten up our, um, our taxes, our payroll, uh, you know, deductions, everything like that, get all the W-two straight, once it's done, she won't need help again. But she doesn't feel comfortable putting her name, because you have, actually, I noticed it was signed by the city clerk. So she doesn't feel comfortable about it, and I certainly don't feel comfortable about sending the state and the federal government figures that I don't believe are correct. So she wants to know if she's got a couple of people in mind, or if maybe you guys know somebody that, a, a good CPA who would just help us with this one thing, and get that all straightened up for her, and she'll be off and running. And she, she really is doing a fantastic job, and has been a, a great, great help to me. Cool. I think that's any, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. I think at this point in time, we, you know, we're taking action, potential of discussion about this, we could and should would go ahead and authorize, uh, the hiring of a CPA to make sure that our W-two payroll deduction for all activities, as far as, do you have to do that motion without?
Make a motion and do that.
You want to Jason?
Yep.
Okay, so Jason? James?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Good, fantastic. With that? Perfect, thank you. With that, we'll move on, the next item of business would be a report from our, uh, head mainess person? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Carter. Keep it, please.
Thank you. I passed out a, a, a sheet that showed all of the activity for the month of December. So if you have any questions about that, I can, I can entertain that. As far as the, uh, on the update on the grants, that JAG grant was released at the end of December for January, so by the end of this month, we should hear back from that, from the JAG grant, because they finally, the prime commission finally released it, they just hung on to it, hung on to it, hung on to it. Uh, that money's been authorized since January of, of twenty twenty-two, but they didn't release any of it to anybody until now, until this January, and they didn't offer any explanation to why, but, but our name is there. We, uh, put in money for, uh, for body-worn cameras, the vehicles, cameras in the vehicles, the radios, so a lot of that is, is coming through now. Uh, I did get an email saying that it's in process, so they, they are following up with this, so we're not lost in the mix. It's just that nobody got funded for anything until now. There's a lot of, well, there has been an increasing request from the county for assistance from us when it comes to people, uh, driving drunk through the county, and I, I just want to say this because I, I've heard and been told that it comes up that you might see the vehicles outside of the city. Well, some of that is because the, the Knox County Sheriff's Office will call us and say, "Hey, we got a report of this or that happening, can you go and check on it?" And we'll go check. Sometimes it's people walking to town that, that are suspicious, or they're walking on the highway drunk, we've done that too, and save people from being hit, but we've been sent as far as eight to ten miles out of town to do something because they didn't have a deputy available. So if you see us out in the county, a lot of times, we're just not out there hot-riding, you know, trying to test out cars, because the county is actually sending us out there. So if you see us, um, up on, uh, Highway twelve, you know, outside, or, you know, the other way, that's probably why, because we got sent there. We also get sent up to, uh, that area near CJ's, you know, that sometimes, mainly when it's warm, warmer out than now, but, uh, but occasionally we do get called out there. I personally have gone up there about six times, I know Sergeant Miller's been up there a few times, but that activity has increased, that we get called to assist the county, or a deputy will call and say, "Hey, can somebody come out here and help us?" The other thing is that, uh, we, we need to really have a snow plan for downtown. I can, you know, I was getting with the city attorney and proposed one to, to bring to the council, but when there's gonna be more than two inches of snow, we do get complaints with some of the elderly people downtown that they have issues getting up on the sidewalk, because the guys can't get all the way up to the curb. Uh, they had a funeral out here the other day where they requested that, that the city guys come back out and, and plow up to the curb because the folks couldn't get there, because that ice, it melts and thaws, it, it freezes thaw, freeze thaw, creates a sheet of ice. But one of the problems is that people wait until they clear the street, and then they blow or shovel their snow back into the street, and they've already done the job, so, you know, that needs to be addressed too. Uh, there's just some things that we don't have, you know, specific ordinances on, and, and I can't, as a, as a law enforcement person, enforce something that's not written. and, and I can't as a, as a law enforcement person enforce something that's not written. So that, that snow plan, when more than two inches of snow, if it falls, uh, from Nebraska to Harold Street and then from First to Fifth Street, if we can get people, you know, between a certain hour the next day, once the snow stop falling, not to park there so they can get that up. And then another thing that I think would be easier for a safety issue is the city doesn't have a spreader to spread salt and sand. We can actually get the salt and sand from the state for free, you know? I don't know if you, if, you know, everybody knew that or not, but, but, but we can get some of that mix from them if it's bad. But we still don't have a way to, 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 to really spread it. And we've gotten complaints that it's really slick. And I've sat by the bar, uh, in the grocery store downtown and just kept my fingers crossed and pray when I see people hit the brake and they, they keep going. But the most dangerous one is that, is that Second and Harold Street, when those trucks come loaded from that grain elevator and they get to that intersection and they hit the brake, they can't stop. We do spread, you know, more, the guys spread more sand down there. But when it's icy and that freezes, those guys come all the way through that intersection. And blowing the horn isn't going to help. So, so we, we really need to, to do something about that, just from a safety issue. Lastly, um, there are some women from Yankton that have started a little prostitution ring here. Um, we, we know where it is. One of the issues is that-
You would say here in town?
It's, it's, it's here in town. And I've really, I, I've been looking into whether or not the villa is, is controlled by the, the Crawford Housing Authority. And I, I, I have mentioned this to Councilman Pike's at one point. It's, it's, it's not clear to me, because I know a nonprofit agency runs that place, but it looks like that, that HUD still has the Crawford Housing Authority as the, as the fiscal agent. So if, if I can get some clarity about, you know, how that is all laid out because there's some concern about law enforcement being on that property now since we've identified that there's an issue and there's some guys that are renting their places out for these women to go do their business. And that was one, now there are two places.
I can help you with that.
So, okay, so I'm going to tell you right now that, that the request for us to stay off that property and not interfere, I'm not going to comply with that. If I find it and I see it to protect the folks there and under the HUD rules, we will arrest and jail those people. So, and so if, 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 if they complain, then they complain. But if they're causing that type of activity to be in a town like this, this size and they're that emboldened to do it, then, you know, the chips are going to fall where they are. Our obligation, you know, is to maintain peace, order and, and good discipline in the city. And if they're going to, because if they want to do that, they can go to Yankton and do it. You know, they can take that to Yankton. But if they're going to be here, then they need to come and be model citizens or visitors when they come here. That, that's just my opinion. So if they complain, just send them back to me. They can post bail and they can come talk to them. Thank you.
Well, I got one, but keep Carter, something that jumps out is 23 sexual assaults?
Okay, so, so-
What does that consist of?
Okay, so those, those are sexual intrusions slash assaults because that is when the, the, uh, the issue from the people, from, uh, from the kids when they were from Laurel, they came here, there was the, there was incident at the high school where there was a young man that went during a varsity game, um, a, a young man went in and he set up a camera.
Oh, okay.
And when the girls were showering, he, he recorded, yeah. So that is also being pursued by the county attorney, those parents are quite upset. So there's a lot of fallout behind that and this still going on.
I thought we had-
Oh, no, not here in town, so-
Something going on down there, that's a lot.
Yes, sir.
John, you said that, you know, you and the deputy get called to out of town-
Yes.
And take care of the lake now. Has, as Knox County Sheriff, going to be cordial to come and cover us when we need help there? If you're going to cover for him out there, if we need some help or if we're short staffed, is he, would you talk to him about that?
Well, I, I, I haven't talked to him about that, but I, I can't say that there have been times when they have come. Well, and mainly when I wasn't here before Sergeant Miller started. If, if I went back, you know, home or I wasn't in town, that's before I actually moved to town. If anything happened to those guys, they were here, if they're available. The problem is they'll show up, but it may take an hour or two sometimes. It just depends on where they're coming from and what the call is. So, uh, they'll get here as, as fast as they can.
There's an officer that lives just west of town here a little bit. And if we know that one of you guys are going to be gone and we got a big doing to go on in Crofton, are they going to be cordial enough to come and help cover us a little bit?
Well, well, they do, sometimes they'll call, you know, NSP. Yeah, because, you know, I, I know, I know Trooper Vaughn has been here several times, he was just here the other day. So you, it's either them or it's NSP. And I've, I've seen NSP in the last, you know, two months here quite a bit. And when they know we're gone, because I called dispatch and let them know when we're not going to be in town or when I'm out of town, and Trooper Vaughn will, he'll stay in the area, so he's close.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Mr. Carter.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Patrick, sorry, delayed, Patrick, keep you with me?
Um, I was asked to put some information together, I didn't get it all put together. Some of it's already in your packet, uh, it's called a maintenance department, like, report. It's some things that I, um, requesting, it's not an all inclusive list. Still putting things together, we have many issues that we can, you can resolve. Um, but that's a start, something we could work with. And this paper that I'm handing out now asks to do with the possibility in the future of, uh, some, of water sampling. Uh, it's, it's just equipment, that's all it is, uh, just to start, possibly start the ball rolling. So, I, I don't know, I didn't have a whole lot to say, there's a lot to go through. I don't think we're going to spend two or three hours tonight. So I don't know if you want to look at it and have questions or concerns might be the best way to handle it. And I also want to, I'll mention the comments meeting, if anybody had any questions or concerns for the state. With, uh, with water. Some questions have arisen and I figure we could get it right from the horse, if there's, uh, horse mount if there's questions.
So Rich, do these, are these, Mr. Coney, are these in compliance with the potential grant money that's available? These items do exist? Okay, all right. Because there, there's grant money available that we talked and discussed and then today our communication was that in July the grant will become available and if we are-
Yes, you sent me that email and I, I want to be prepared to reply, I didn't reply back immediately because I wanted to verify what the status of those were. Yes, this is what I was referred to as a sample station. And yes, these are part of the, uh, can be approved through the grant if you apply and get awarded the grant.
But the grant that we talked before will have to do five new stations?
If you, if you apply for the grant, you, in order to get the money, you have to do a total of one zone. You have one zone currently, uh, your population's what approximately, just under?
It's under 800.
Eight hundred.
Around 800. Okay, so you're, you're not close to getting to a level where you'd actually have to have two. I got one system, I was just at that, they're within 60 people of going into the next level. Um, but having said that, you, all you're going to need is five, but you will have to do all five in order to qualify for the grant. Along with that, somebody will have to be ISO 100, 200, 700 certified, which is N-train. Um, if there's, you know, somebody with the, with the city, uh, sometimes it's a water operator, sometimes it's somebody with the fire department, that they have to have, that has to be part of it in order to get that grant.
And, and that'll be part of the grant application, that information?
Yeah, yeah, and if you're looking to give somebody 100, 200, 700, they can do that online. Uh, it is done through the federal government, it's referred to as N-train. The grant, uh, for, I know, I know two of you were there when we talked about this, but the grant is for, it's a, it's a 10% match and you can get up to $10,000 from us and match it with 1,000. A lot of places have been putting them in, there is some other things that when you put one of those in, you are going to probably want to buy some type of enclosure to put over them when you take it because of the wind. You don't want to be taking your water sample when it's windy. Got two former water operators sitting back here and they'll tell you that exact, along with that.
What are these for?
They're for taking your normal routine monthly coliform bacteria sample.
And how many samples are we taking now?
You take one a month.
From all five sites?
You're supposed to rotate amongst all five. Now, when COVID was going on, we did, uh, we gave the authority for them to go down to a minimum of two sites. And the reason for that was we did not want any of our water operators at risk of, kind of, you know, basically getting COVID. We did lose, I know of at least one water operator that died from COVID. And, uh, there's not enough operators to go around right now, so why take that chance? Um, according to some people, if you listen to the media or whatever, COVID ain't over. Uh, but we've kind of very well backed up on that, we want to see them back at their normal sites.
And these five sites are picked by who, the state?
They're picked, no, they're picked by the water operator. The sites that are being used were, um, I think if I'm not mistaken, were submitted by Larry back in 2016, 2016, not 2000, yeah, 2016. That's the sample site finder currently, you have approved, submitted and approved. Any changes to that would have to be submitted and approved because we, we do review them so that we make sure that the distribution system is being unified.
Sure.
That's what the intent behind that is.
Sure.
So, and we, we do give approval and once that approval's given, they don't have to update it unless they change sites. If you put sample stations in, there will not be any changing after that because that's going to be sites that you will always rotate amongst.
What determines where we put a site?
Um, depending on, well, what I look at is I take it, when, when we do the review of it and I typically am the one that does the review in my field area because I do the sanitary survey. We'll take a look at your water map and then I got little stickies in my car and in my one folder where I put a sticky, like a flag, wherever your sites are and I look and see how that lines up with your distribution system. In other words, I look for where your mains are laying in areas, um, and try and alleviate collecting samples near a dead end or whatever. But we come in, um, we offer that assistance too, if you're looking to put this out. If you get awarded the grant, want somebody to come in and look at where could be possible good locations for it because these will be looking like, they're not, they don't look like a fire hydrant, but they're still going to be off your main a short distance. So you want to kind of put them in a place where they're not necessarily, uh, not that you have wild drivers around, but you don't want somebody sliding into one. Because that is a line that's coming directly from your main. Uh, it's going to be a three quarter line, so if somebody would pop one of them and break something, you're looking at about anywhere from 12 to 15 gallons a minute going down the road. Right now, in this time, uh, the chief was just talking about ice. Well, we, if you have a leak leaked long enough, you're going to have a lot of ice and then if it goes cold, you're not going to get rid of it. Or if the leak occurs in the middle of the cold, it don't take long for it to ice up.
The purpose to check in the water is to make sure it's all, across the work, consistent?
Yes, well, uh, the purpose behind it is to make sure the bacteria didn't get into it.
So-
Coliform bacteria, and this is a spiel we give when we start training our water operators and that. Coliform bacteria is basically dust, dirt, okay? If the source is properly, and, you know, and typically I'm dealing with well sources, but you guys are coming off the Missouri, so they got a treatment plant to remove any potential bacteria. Um, so if, if your source is clean, if your distribution system is tight, if your storage tank's tight, there's not a way for that bacteria to get in it. We pull samples on a routine basis and the federal government's the ones that designed all the fancy regulations we are in. Um, but anyway, it's an easy test. What we're really after is E. coli bacteria, but that is expensive. But our testing now that we do, they're actually after viruses and that, but you can't afford to test for them. But the, with coliform, it's a very easy test, cheap test. And you guys, because of the population breaks, you guys are only taking one sample.
So two things is that we're, we're assuring the quality of the water up to the consumer's access, right?
You're, you're ensuring the water quality up to where your responsibility for that ends. Now, I don't, I didn't grab your sanitary surveys, I don't know, but that's one of the questions. You ended the curb stop?
Curb stops.
You ended, you ended the curb stop. So you're assuring the responsibility of that water is good to wherever that curb stop is from meter pit, you got meter pits.
So these will be all pre curb stops, these, and then the other question?
Yeah, no, we, those would be directed, Mr. Mayor, those will be tapped directly off your main and typically you only see a three to five foot length of pipe so that you can, you don't have to flush it forever to get good quality water. Because that's what we're at, when we, when I have, when we train water operators, we're taking it from homes or even this building, so I know this building's one, shops down there, we want that water to run long enough so the water sample actually comes out of water that is in that main. Because that's what you fully have control over, is that main.
Okay, and the other question is, all right, so to, to do the repairs that we have here, um, probably have to wait till the frost goes out of the ground in Nebraska and it's going to be for sure, right, to do this?
Well, if you're going to put the sample stations in-
Yes, we would, this would be, we would, we would re, remiss to do this, we wouldn't want to do this and then turn around and do five more sample stations?
No, 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 no.
It's okay with you officially to wait till the July applies?
So we can get those, yes, so you can put those stations in, but you still will need, um, after our conversation, I've got a letter that's coming out to you guys basically saying that you need to evaluate access to the five sites. If those five sites, if, if some of those sites can't be accessed, you need to develop a new sample site plan within 30 days.
And do you help us with that or is that something you are on?
Basically, I don't come help, talk to the people about using sites like that. Um, I will help, you know, in essence with the plan you got and being reviewed, if you kind of stay in the same areas, I mean, you move a house three, four places, I ain't worried about that. But if you go to move totally and, you know, the best way to put it is when I look down at, uh, basically an area map, but it's not an area, it's just a map of your streets. I want to see kind of one in the center, one there, one over there, one there, and one there. I know one's right at the end of this main street here. One's at the end of one street over there, one's at the shop, one's here, the other one's out over on the east end of town. So for the most part, you've got your area pretty well sorted out.
So I, I've looked at those areas and it would be really simple to stay right in that same area and tap off the main. So if anybody wanting that information, I could go out there and sh, show you really quickly. And then we can submit that information then for Rich to review to make sure it's okay with the state.
I've got to get up to Creighton one of these days and go over that because they got their sample station setting there, but they didn't go through the security grant, they actually bottomed themselves. Um, but they're setting there in their treatment plant and he's waiting for me to get up there. It's just, got to have adequate time to get to places sometimes.
Clean yourself.
Huh?
Clean yourself.
Uh, there's a lot of operators that don't, there, there's a lot of places in the state really don't want that because they're pretty well, pretty stringent with the regs.
Okay, thank you very much, any questions of Rich or, or? Thanks, Rich. Mr., or Patrick?
I, I just have a couple of things I want to point out that are high priority on, on the maintenance department report for Titan. Um, and, and one that we've run into problems before is getting on Miller paintings list to repair the bottom of the pool so the pool can be open when everyone wants it open in Memorial Day. Uh, so just a note, um, and I've also been, uh, this summer, uh, I was called down to the swimming pool and the state inspector asked how old the diving boards are and they're beyond the life expectancy. And so, and they're old enough that if we want diving boards, we have to submit for a permit, an application. And so then they're old enough that if we want diving boards, we have to submit a, for a permit, an application, and replace the diving boards and it'll have to go through the state. Um, if we do not go through the state and get an engineering sign-off, there's a fine of a thousand dollars for, for not using the proper channels. And, uh, just a quick reference, we get magazines, a quick look. Uh, one diving board, just a diving board is between two and six thousand dollars. Depending on what you're looking at, uh, it was ju, it's just a quick, uh, number throw, to throw out there. So I'm looking for permission or if somebody wants to head that up uh, and, and start that process because it does take time for this to go through the state. And again, if we want our pool open, the sooner we can get started on this, the better. And the other thing that I would want to draw attention to tonight would be Johnson Service Company camera to inspect it, our water, or I mean, excuse me, our sewer mains. And, uh, there are a number of areas of concern, but the, the biggest concern is a manhole. It's, uh, let's see, at Fourth and Nebraska. They had to actually go in there when they were cammering in the area and the operator touched the wall and the brick fell out. So my proposal is for the board to, uh, come up, poss, I'm asking for permission to call Johnson Services of Monty. And he, he was the one that came out and inspected the holes and made the estimate to fix the ten manholes that were repaired this summer. I'm asking to, for permission to ask them to come up and prepare a bid uh, and for the, us to take the time to find the next ten manholes and come up with an approximate price. And this one here at, uh, Fourth and Nebraska being the top priority.
Did we approve that when you said they could go fix that manhole? Remember it was a new ten year?
We approved a five-year angel, yes.
The five-year angel was camera and clean, but the repair of the structure of the manhole was on a ten, was ten, ten of the worst manholes.
Every year?
No, ten, that's it.
Oh, I thought we approved it to ten a year from then till they're done.
No, no, that, that was not my understanding. And because the biggest thing is, is the depth, the size, the, the bench in the bottom. Monty looks at it, measures it, and then comes up with a price. So every manhole is going to be different. We have some manholes that are three feet deep and some that are fourteen feet deep. And, and this summer we fixed the, what we came up with the worst ten. And so I'm asking for, to, to, to get an estimate for possibly the next ten. Or if you want to try to do twenty, whatever you guys would like.
I guess I thought we were under the assumption that we were doing ten a year.
Can you, can you?
At that force, since you were, we are, he was both ways.
Yeah, I thought. An estimate of what it is and then check on the, the status of, was we, I think, thought we had budgeted annually for ten to, to repair in addition.
Okay, I, yeah, I could try and look at it.
Yeah, well, and understandable, every year is going to be a different price. It might go up, it might go down and damage to the manhole is going to change. But I'm pretty sure we approved it to do ten a year until the project was done. How many that, how many years that would take, I'm not sure. But, but if, and if they think we can jump that up a little bit because there might be some that are worse, then we can't wait another year, that's understandable. That makes sense?
Yes.
Okay. In light of that, would we want to then entertain a motion to get, that's what you need is a motion to get an estimate then? Or just to get Miller painting and, and go ahead and do that with the pool?
Yeah, let's, I'll make a motion to get a hold of Miller painting. Soon as the snow's out, we'll have a couple of hits.
And go ahead and authorize them to do it or authorize to get a repick?
Authorize, that's the bid.
Can I ask a question?
Don't give them, you, green light, go ahead.
Do you have statistics of how many people use the pool?
Not here, deny we don't, we give, yeah.
Well, well, you probably should make a look into how much is being used.
Why's that?
Because it's a huge expense to the facility.
What's that?
It's a huge expense to the.
It is? You're right, a hundred percent. It is?
You just want to, I mean, if you're having ten people, you have ten people a day?
No, we're, I know, I know it's more than ten people a day, I live by it.
Well, I just wonder, I mean, I understand it's never going to make money, but per cap and per person, how much are you spending for that pool?
Based on what?
Her person.
Repairs and lifeguard and?
Everything, whole expense of the pool.
And where would you cut that off at?
I don't know, maybe, maybe can you, can you afford the pool?
Yeah.
I'm going to have a pool.
You want to have a pool? I'm just, I'm just asking.
Unless we can afford to be available, can we?
No.
We can, we can.
Alright, so with that, entertain a motion to, uh, have Miller give us an estimate and get on the list.
I'll make a motion. Go ahead.
And then we'll do it, it will separate them for the boards, I, I think, right? I, I consider it a board. I don't know. Second to the motion to Miller? Did you second? Woburnet? Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Pike?
Yes.
Okay. Then I guess we'll, brought to our attention here, we, there, the issue on the boards, so I don't know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can shed a little light from the state side on that because the person, the person that does your inspection also works in our division. He actually works out in our.
On the pools?
On the pool. Um, what she, what, what Patrick was telling you is that if you're going to make changes like that, they require that you submit plans and specs to Lincoln, get them approved before it gets accomplished. If you fail to do that, you're still going to have to do the plans and specs after the fact or as built, is what it gets referred to. And then you're going to get an extra, you have the potential to get an extra thousand dollar review fee or late fee. So I just wanted you to understand what he told you, that, that even happens with your water site. Anything that requires a line specs from the water. And, because we're all in the same section. So I just wanted you to understand what he was saying about that thousand dollars.
And I thought you were going to enlighten us with the grant money to take care of it.
No, no, I am not.
Okay, well, but anyway, but we can, I, I think if we have, you know, I don't know exactly where the pool is as far as, you know, uh, re, renovating the pool or whatever, but they might be able to be repurposed if they're right there.
No, I don't think so. I just figured out.
Well, yeah, we have, there's a pool board in the city. I don't know if there's a representative from the pool board here tonight. They're not, I don't think so.
So, um.
Make a motion to look into getting boards, putting them, putting the proposal together?
Something together.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to.
Start a grant application.
Yeah, for the boards.
I'll say.
I'll say. So the motion was made by Murphy and seconded by Pike. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pike?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Woburn?
Yes, sir. I, I guess the next thing I have on the list is, is me, Mr. Evans, is the mayor, is I had one and I, and it was negligent of my duties here. I did have a request today or yesterday, I can't remember, Mr. Murphy, which day it was. Is that the, hold me, would you like me to for the?
Unity supper?
Unity supper for a liquor license.
Liquor license for the unity supper.
For a one-day liquor license and?
It's February. I'll prove, I'll make a motion, make a one-day liquor license for the unity supper.
In February.
For who?
For the unity supper, that's February. It's the first February of the month, I believe. Uh, February ten.
Unity supper.
Or February eleventh, Saturday.
Sorry, okay. Motion was made by Murphy and seconded by Woburnet. Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Woburnet?
Yes.
And Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I've got one thing to quick clear up. Uh, on the, on the list of maintenance items, the skid loader is on like the third page, I believe. Uh, when I did this, there, there was an issue with skid loaders and the lease was coming over new. This last week, Katens informed us that the new skid loader was again. So, so that has been taken care of. We have the next year's skid loader.
Ready to go.
It's, yeah, it's in the shop. We've used it actually for snowing, so.
Perfect, thank you.
That one you can just plain cross off the list.
Okay, alright. And we do that every year, right, Derek?
Yes, it's a year weeks, yeah. Bobcat was having trouble with production with COVID. They weren't getting them those sorts of things, so, uh, we basically got months of the old one, uh, for no charge.
Okay, thank you. With that, the next item would be unfis, businesses, the update on the progress of selling the four lots of Omaha Street. With that, those properties need to be identified, legal description, and we need to also list the conditions of a pending purchase. We have so many interested persons, those all need to be listed and then need to be, by statute, need to be in the paper three consecutive weeks. After the third week they're in the paper, we have thirty days or the public has thirty days to bring issue with that. If not, no issue arises after that thirty days, then they're properly being sold. And, uh, what do you call the thing? Ordinance will then be approved by the board. So if that's how you gentlemen want to proceed with that, or if there's something different you want to try, but that's the legal statute on how it works. If that's so, then I would prepare that or have somehow we'll prepare the ordinance and get the legal description and, and get that approved. So, and I don't know if we can pre-approve that ordinance pending me writing the legal description of it or if you have to have that ordinance in front of you in order to approve that. I'm ignorant to that, so I guess I would, I'm assured. I know we've done it in the past, but it's up to you. Because if we would just be simply writing down the legal description of those lots and then, uh, putting down the the conditions of the sale, then those would be posted for three times consecutive in the paper and then a thirty-day period after that one time before we can legal sell that according to state statute. So, I guess we could make a motion to approve that ordinance written as such, if that's what you'd like to do?
I'll make that motion.
And that would be ordinance number?
Uh, one, ten, twenty, twenty?
Three dash three.
Three.
I'll make it, I'll second that motion.
Okay, with that, it'd be Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Woburnet?
Yes.
And Mr.?
Mr..
Okay, uh, we will establish the next regular meeting to be February seventh, uh, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P.M. at that point in time. Hopefully we'll peak in, uh, having Mr. Miller take the oath of office. With that, we need a motion to go into closed session, discuss the potential personnel placement and hires and at, uh, eight thirty-five.
Seven.
Seven thirty-five. Motion's made by Murphy?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Pike. Mr. Woburnet?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Okay, we need a motion to come out of closed session, but the only item being discussed was potential personnel placement hired. I make a motion to come out of closed session.
Second.
Motion was made by Pike and seconded by Woburnet. Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.
Mr. Woburnet? With that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
I'll second. Motion to adjourn by Mr. Murphy, seconded by Mr. Pike. Um, Mr. Woburnet?
Yeah, well, yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pike?
Yes.